Good evening. Call to order, the regular county council meeting of June 13th, 2022. We'll begin with an invocation by Carissa Figgins from Harvester Christian Church. Good evening, thanks for being here. Everyone, please rise.
Hey God, thank you for being who you say you are and for doing the things that you say you're going to do. Thank you for every single person gathered in this room. Thank you for this incredible county that you've created. Thank you for each of these county councilmen and women sacrificially serving this county. We thank you most of all for being here among us. Thank you Father, for always being in support of your people. Father God, I am so grateful that you are the God of peace. I pray that even when there are differences of opinions, because you have fearfully and wonderfully made us all so uniquely, I pray that you will bless everyone here with the unity of spirit to guide us with those differences. Help everyone to actively and gently listen to each other. Help everyone to work as a unified team, combining all kinds of great ideas for great outcomes in our community. Unify everyone gathered here tonight with passion and purpose. Father God, may your grace cover every aspect of this meeting. I pray that all voices will be heard. I pray that this is a safe space for all people to express their opinions and a place where ideas and hearts matter more than titles. May everyone be engaged and involved and feel valued. Father God, you are the God of wisdom and we are looking for your help tonight. Come and let your wisdom fall on everyone who is gathered here tonight. Bless everyone with clarity that reveals problem areas but also shows the best solutions. Lord, we know Scripture tells us we can show our good behavior and deeds in the gentleness of our wisdom. Scripture tells us that jealousy and selfish ambition breed disorder. I pray tonight that wisdom from you will reveal itself as peaceable, gentle, reasonable, and full of mercy. Father God, I want to also ask you to remind each of us of why you have placed us in this community and this time and in this space. Remind us of your greatest command to love you and to love our neighbor. We seek your honor in everything that we say and do. I lift up this meeting to you. Be here, Lord. Bless us all with an abundant forgiveness, grace, and most of all, love. Amen.
Thank you very much. Dave Hammond will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Cronin.
Here.
Councilman Brazel. Councilman Elam. Councilwoman Schneider.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilman Hollander.
Here.
Councilman White.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is the conditional use permits. I think we have three. That would be bill number 5073, 5074, and 5075.
Nancy. Nancy.
A public presentation comes before the conditional use permits tonight.
Okay, oh, there's a public, okay. I beg your pardon. Okay, I'm sorry. You just have a seat for a second. So we do have a public presentation. I'm sorry.
Let's proceed with the public presentation.
We're doing the best we can here. We've got obviously a serious problem with the cooling. You gentlemen are all dressed up in your suits. Good evening.
Good evening. Members of the county council, County Executive Steve Elman. Dr. Joseph Schaefer is a Commissioner for the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, or CLEA, and a professor of criminology and criminal justice and Associate Dean of Research in the College for Public Health and Social Justice at St. Louis University. He holds a Bachelor of Arts in Criminology from the University of Northern Iowa, a Master of Science in Criminal Justice, and a PhD in interdisciplinary social science from Michigan State University. Dr. Schaefer's research focuses on policing, organizational change, leadership, citizen perceptions of police, and futures research in policing. He was president of the Police Futurists International, is a member of the Futures Working Group, and was a visiting scholar in the Behavior Science Unit of the FBI Academy and the Center of Excellence in Policing and Security in Australia. He has authored five books, more than 50 research and policy articles appearing in various academic journals and policing periodicals. Dr. Schaefer.
Good evening, sir. Thanks for being here.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you, members of the St. Charles County Council and executive and administrative leadership. On behalf of the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, the Commission Chair, Chief Marcus Brown, and the Executive Director, Mr. Craig Hartley, CLEA is honored to be here to recognize the tremendous effort and commitment put forth by Chief Fritz and the St. Charles County Police Department. CLEA was created in 1979 when the founding organizations, the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the National Association of Black Law Enforcement Executives, the National Sheriff's Association, and the Police Executive Research Forum recognized the need within the law enforcement community to develop professional standards to enhance the delivery of police services. Since its inception, CLEA has accredited agencies under standards developed by many of the best public safety practitioners and leaders of our time. These standards cover a wide range of administrative, operational, and logistical issues and provide the framework for recognizing the professional excellence within public safety. The standards are reviewed continuously to ensure that each is current and remains relevant. In a time when public safety is being scrutinized, St. Charles community leaders and citizens should take comfort in the fact that its police department has voluntarily committed to operating at a higher level and under a step of more than 450 rigorous standards. The goals of CLEA are to strengthen crime prevention and control capacities, formalize essential management procedures, establish fair and non-discriminatory personnel practices, improve service delivery, solidify interagency cooperation and coordination, and increase community and staff confidence in the agency. Based on the goals and mission statement of CLEA, I can think of no better time or place to present this accreditation certificate to the agency than at a public meeting where all can share and recognize the hard work that this agency has committed remaining accredited. The certificate itself is a simple matted piece of paper in a frame, but it has a much broader symbolic meaning. The certificate clearly represents the agency's efforts to achieve accredited status, thereby demonstrating its willingness to change in order to effectively address contemporary public safety concerns. It represents a commitment to doing the right thing in the right ways. Lastly, it represents an ongoing dedication to ensuring the agency's resources are appropriately developed, effectively deployed, and constantly managed, all in the name of a safer community for workers, visitors, and customers. At the commission meeting held April 2nd, 2002 in Orlando, Florida, CLEA commissioners reviewed the assessor's report, concurred with their findings, and unanimously approved the reaccreditation of the St. Charles County Police Department. Your police department has been accredited since 2018. This makes it its second award and its first reaccreditation. At this time, I would like to congratulate the Chief Executive Officer of the St. Charles County Police Department, Chief Kirk Fritz, and his accreditation staff for their hard work in achieving CLEA Advanced Accreditation.
That's a nice. Yeah.
Chief, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, actually, I'd like to say thank you to the Commissioner and Commissioner for coming out tonight. I really appreciate that. And really, the credit goes to Tom Persic, who's our accreditation manager. He works diligently all year long in maintaining the standards and making sure we're in compliance with the standards. So he really does keep us in check, make sure our policies and procedures are up to date and current, and it's ever-changing, ever-evolving. So Tom deserves so much credit for what he does, day in and day out. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Okay. Now we'll move on to the conditional use permits. Again, there are three bills, all pertaining to the same property. They'll be voted independently, but perhaps Mr. Myers could tell us about these. Are you prepared to do them all at once?
Yes, if you are. I'm okay with that.
Bill number 5073, requested by Mike Hurlbert, sponsored by Joe Cronin. An ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 22-04A, for an outdoor storage lot for automobiles, boats, trailers, and recreational vehicles to Lake St. Louis Boat and RV Storage LLC property owner and Ben Molitor applicant.
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Robert Myers, Planning and Zoning Division Director, and even though these are three different conditional use permit requests, three different bills, I'd like to do just one brief presentation. The reason there are three different bills is because you have the options to approve, approve with conditions, or deny each one of these separately, although they're on the same property and the same property owner and the same applicant. One is for the property zone light industrial. You may know it as located between Josephville Road and Highway A, just east of the GM plant. It's zone light industrial, but it presently does not have sanitary sewer service. So because of that, the property has been, in terms of land use, has been more prone to outdoor uses such as storage, like we have for you tonight. Most recently, it served as a golf driving range, and also there was a baseball diamond there as well. So one of the CUPs is for store out automobiles, boats, trucks, trailers, and recreational vehicles. The second one says for heavy construction equipment, but they've explained that's really smaller construction equipment. And then the third is for landscaping contracting service, although they indicate it would not include heavy-duty equipment, such as they won't be mowing grass. It'll have to do with the health of landscaping rather than the maintenance of landscaping. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on May 18th. They had one speaker in support, a letter from the city of Wintsville that's in here for the record. We did review the city of Wintsville's comments. For instance, they want all paved surfaces, lighting of no more than 24 feet in height. That's addressed by the county's ordinance of no more than 20 feet in height. They want landscape screening, which is being provided as part of this, and some of their other standard comments. Planning and Zoning Commission, following the public hearing, recorded unanimously nine to nothing that the county council approve each of the three conditional use permit bills that are before you with specific conditions to address land use impacts for neighbors. And county staff concurs with this recommendation as meeting the CUP criteria in section 405.510B of the county ordinances.
Do you want to introduce the applicant as well?
Oh, sure. Yeah, Mark Struckoff with Bax Engineering, and perhaps Ben Molitor with Lake St. Louis Boat and RV Storage here at this time.
And, sir, you are?
I'm Mark Struckoff with Bax Engineering.
Okay. You can come up as well. Does anyone have any questions for Robert, though, before we hear from the applicant? Mr. Struckoff? No. Okay. Sir, you need to be sworn, I believe. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay. But, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, staff. I am here to ask for your approval for three different conditional use permits previously described by Mr. Myers. I would kind of like to go over the equipment type for the construction, just in case you're a little bit unweary, thinking it may be bigger equipment. This is going to be more like an electric conduit installer, so they're going to have small equipment, like a mini excavator, maybe a skid steer, small rubber tire Bobcat, maybe a smaller directional driller, just small little equipment like that. We're not talking the big old track hose, or big old bulldozers, or dump trucks, or anything, large equipment of that sort. And I believe Robert did touch on the landscaping company equipment that they could store outside. It's not going to be mowers and weed eaters. It's more of, you know, getting your lawn into shape and maintaining it, and more of the healthcare of that. And we do have the applicant here to, I believe.
That's a drawing of the...
Yeah. Let me try to expand that just a little bit here for you. I can kind of walk through how it's...
This is location, if we just put the concrete plant next to it, okay? Yep. Sir?
Yes.
Come on. We're familiar with the area. We approved a concrete plant adjacent to this recently. This is in my district. I've been out there. We know that one side of it is kind of a junkyard. The other side's a concrete plant. This was the old defunct golf course. It's right across Highway A from the GM plant. Perfect, in my opinion, it's a perfect place for what you want to do. And the only neighbor out there is Alice Retcher, and she's, I spoke with her over the concrete plant, and she didn't have any concerns with it either. So, I mean, it's up to you if you want to carry on in this hot weather, but since we're just introducing it, okay, I don't see any controversy regarding it, okay?
Okay. I would just like to add, this fits in perfectly with the county's future plan for 2030. It's I-1 industrial and kind of a softer and storage industrial as you move north up to the Wintsville GM plant.
You've got an RV dealer right down the street road from it, because people buy RVs, can't store them in their subdivision, so they got to have a place to store them. So it's a good fit for the county.
I had a question. When I went through the information about that, I noticed that there were several conditions that were suggested. I think two of the bills had six conditions and one had seven conditions. Are you familiar with those and are you prepared to follow those conditions?
Yes, I am very familiar with those conditions, and we will meet those conditions as presented.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. What was your name again, sir?
Mark Struckoff.
Struckoff, okay. Any questions for Mr. Struckoff? Okay. Is there any public comment?
Arne Deenhoff.
Before Mr. Deenhoff speaks, I'm just going to remind everybody to try to speak directly into the microphone, because there are some issues with people being able to hear us. So, okay. Go ahead, then. Go ahead, Mr. Deenhoff. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman, members of the county council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deenhoff, county public advocate. We just went through, a couple years ago, the countywide 2030 master land use plan. Now, as you all recall, all that aggravating time, stress, the energy, and the consultants that we paid a lot of money to, we went through that exercise, and we came up with a master use plan. And that plan was to have the best use of all properties throughout the county, to bring the best possible county in the nation. Now, we want to make sure that we're having a cross-sector in bringing in tax revenues so you, as the county council, don't raise our taxes. In terms of this property, it will bring in little to no sales tax revenues, or general tax revenues in terms of more assessed valuation, either on personal property or real estate. This is a high-use area. It's a heavy industrial area. The Port Authority, which was just formed less than a year and a half ago, has targeted this area as an aim zone to give tax credits and tax breaks. So I feel that this land could be used for better usage and better fit with our countywide master use plan. However, with the nine to zero vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm sure you'll probably stamp their approval and approve these three conditional use permits. If you do agree to approve their three conditional use permits, I would ask that you put the following conditions to ensure that our county is protected. Number one, a type-three screening landscape barrier, that in addition to the landscape barrier, that you add the planting of spruce trees as a condition. We want to make sure that there's a fence that's secure to protect our residents who will be renting this place to store their boats and RVs and trucks. Then no unlicensed vehicles be remained to allow on the property more than seven days. Then no derelict vehicles, boats, trailers, motorhomes, or other equipment be allowed to remain on the property at any time. Then no auto body or major repairs be done on the property, besides for the heavy equipment, which is one of the conditional use permits. Then no storage of outdoor parts or outdoor tire storage be allowed. No storage of outdoor chemicals or drums, of oil, or other solvents be allowed outside of any building. Then no one can reside or live in motorhomes for more than 28 to 48 hours to prepare their motorhomes or their campers. And as we all know, sometimes there's problems in families, and I believe that this could be turned into is other places throughout the county, people use this as their permanent residence, and they end up living in their RV or mobile home on a permanent basis. And so I really feel that the necessities of water and sewer and trash receptacles aren't being provided at this property, that we put that as a condition. Then no storage of any inoperable or non-operating heavy equipment, construction equipment, be allowed on the property. I just visited Sulfur Springs, which is a tiny village in Jefferson County off of 6170, and there's a pavement company that's in the middle of this little town, and they've accumulated a lot of heavy trucks, heavy bulldozers, rollers, and dump trucks, and it looks like they've been sitting there for 50 or more years, non-running, unlicensed license plates, and rusted vehicles. So we want to make sure that that doesn't happen in our county. Then no sales besides their own equipment not be allowed on the property. And also, I haven't heard the applicant, and I asked at the Planning and Zoning Commission, I really didn't get a good response. The chairman tried to ask some questions, but what about cameras? Access? Is it going to be 24/7 access or limited access? What about security to ensure that all customers are protected that rent with this applicant? Those are my comments, Madam Chairwoman. I'll entertain any questions, or otherwise, I thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Mr. Struckoff, did you want to respond to anything that's been said?
Yeah, I'll respond. By code are required to have a type-three buffer, so that addresses his concern for screening. The entire property is fenced, and there is one entrance in, one entrance out, and it will be locked through a security gate, so there's security coming in, and that's not an issue. I will defer to the applicant to address if there will be security cameras or any other enhanced security features outside of the fence and screening that we're providing.
Is he here today?
Yes.
Would you like him to come up and speak, sir? Reluctantly. Good evening. You need to be sworn in.
Okay.
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I will.
State your name, sir.
Ben Molitor.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
What would you like?
Yeah, talking to the mic.
What would you like to know?
Well, you're a little tall, but do your best.
Sorry. What was the question?
As Mr. Struckoff, about security cameras, I think.
Yes, we do have plans to put multiple security cameras on the whole property, that way. Everyone that checks in will have a keypad and a keypad to get in and out, and we'll have multiple cameras around, yes.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Molitor? Next is Bill Number 5074, which is also a part of that same property. Would you read the bill, please?
Bill Number 5704, requested by Michael Hurlberg, sponsored by Joe Cronin. An ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 22-04B, for an outdoor storage area yard for contractors having construction equipment, to Lake St. Louis Boat and RV Storage LLC property owner and Ben Molitor applicant.
So any other questions, discussions, or public comment on this particular bill? Hearing none, we'll move on to...
One moment, Arne filled out a card. Arne Deenoff.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, Arne C. A.C. Deenoff, county public advocate. Madam Chairwoman, for the next two bills, if you could please instruct the clerk of the council to put the same comments that I just made a few moments ago with all three bills, I sure would appreciate it, and it would save me the time from coming up to the podium. Thank you.
Could there be a notice in the minutes that Mr. Deenoff's comments apply to all three of the bills? Okay, thank you. All right, and then, I think we still need to do 5075.
Bill Number 5075, requested by Michael Hurlberg, sponsored by Joe Cronin. An ordinance granting conditional use permit, 22-CUP 22-04C, for a landscaping contracting service to Lake St. Louis Boat and RV Storage LLC property owner and Ben Molitor applicant.
So any other question, comment, or public comment concerning this bill? So that will then conclude the public hearing on all three of these bills, and they'll be on the next agenda, I guess that's June 27th for voting. All right, thank you, Mr. Struckoff.
Thank you.
Moving on then to public comments. Claire?
Concerning Bill Number 5069, Brenda Webb.
Okay, good evening. I just have several things, I kind of got over. I have a projector thing. Is it going to come on?
It'll take a minute, I think. If you... Your time is running, if you want to go ahead and start.
Well, yeah, can we start over, since I had to wait?
No, we're...
Just go ahead. Okay, so this is, this is a short, a rastaman survey of our present administration in DC. Their, here, I'll just read it. Their main topics are abortion, Capitol riot, COVID, climate change, LBTQ, Ukraine. Americans' top issues are inflation, election integrity, violent crime, rising gas prices, illegal immigration, and open border indoctrination in schools. So as you can see, they are not in sync at all. That's because they don't listen to us. Prices are going up like crazy, gas is going up 177 percent, groceries are up like 11.99 percent. That's what people care about. Mr. Biden is underwater, as you can see, and his disapproval is 72 percent. Likewise, I have a list, and I'll just, I can hand this out. I have a list for St. Charles County, pretty long, very similar. Okay, so, on the bill, my objections to this, the kind of a main objection, is that this is ceding, again, ceding control of things in our county to St. Charles County, or St. Louis County. The police chief over there in St. Louis is in charge of everything, he can commandeer our police, he can, you know, he's the one that tells, says what they have to do, and you guys should stop ceding your power to the county executive. It's your job to do this stuff, and you need to make sure our police are not subjected to St. Louis County Police Chief. They're the premier police in the area. There was no riots two years ago in the summer when BLM and Antifa were all over the place, and they tried. Our police stopped them. St. Louis didn't. Don't send our police over there with them. They can collaborate, they already do. And I have a public service announcement? The monkey is coming. The monkey is coming. Lord have mercy, the monkey is coming. One if by land, and two if by sea. This is how you need to know it will be. We won't mask up, we won't shut down, because St. Charles County is free. What's a woman? What is a woman? Do y'all know?
Ma'am.
Jennifer Barker?
I'm sorry.
Hello, Jennifer Barker, Lake St. Louis, and I'm talking again about 5069. First of all, I want to congratulate Chief Fritz. Thank you so much for your service to us. And I'm thankful for 5069, that you amended and removed the Fusion Center portion of that, and it looks like Article 6 had Section D removed. I'm still concerned with this legislation, though. It's still something I do not think we need to be participating with St. Louis County, as I spoke of last meeting. I'm still in opposition of that. I do oppose that it's in the county executive's hands, or his designee, that it would not be the council. And then also, in Section B of termination, Article 6, no, I'm sorry, 7, termination, it says voluntary termination by any party, the St. Louis County Executive, on behalf of St. Louis County, or any chief civilian elected official. So that's confusing to me, it doesn't mention St. Charles County, though I'd like clarification on that, of who is able to terminate the plan. And then I was just looking over the agenda as I walked in, and, boy, my home budget, I've had to cut a lot of things, and when I look at this, three-year licensing with Microsoft, 2.3 million, vital core health strategies for corrections, 2.1 million, facilities, assessment project, electrical buildings, 5.3 million, like, the budget, this is crazy, all of this money, what... That's just one, one agenda at one meeting. And our politicians, are they elected or selected? That's the question going through the majority of folks' mind in this country, in this county, based on opinion polls. What has the County Council and County Executive done about the following election issues? The canvassing report from Missouri canvassers that identified both atrocious overflated voter rolls, and an unaccepted error rate in the St. Charles County from past elections. We have voting machines that can indeed connect to the internet, and are susceptible to manipulation. We have election systems and processes that create the opportunity and facilitate the means of election fraud. The election in April of '22, that saw, we saw a left-wing candidate win with 850 votes over any other candidate in conservative Wentzville. The candidate was, also received a suspicious number of absentee votes compared to all absentee votes, and was recorded with another candidate discussing creating votes for the election. An election in April of '22, where election judges were able to vote twice. An election authority that waited till the end of the day to address these issues, once voting was over, then sent the police after the ones who helped find the issue. An air disclosed by the election authority that led to over 300 voting irregularities in April of '22.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Tim Baker.
Good evening. I'm Tim Baker, candidate for St. Charles County Council, District 7. First off, I want to thank Councilman John White for sponsoring Bill 5078. Thank you very much. And I know it's a bill for introduction, so I don't believe you're being voted on this tonight, but I ask you, again, one more time, please, when this comes to a final vote, please support it. These folks have, have been going through a lot in the last two years. I'm so happy to see something's finally being done. So again, thank you, Mr. White. Thank you, council, and please, I implore you, please vote yes. Thank you.
Charles Sap, on the Greens Bottom Road rezoning.
Do you have to swear my name?
No, you can just go ahead and start, sir.
Charlie Sap, 771 Meadow Cliff Tribe, St. Charles, Missouri. Speaking on the bill to rezone Greens Bottom, our subdivision is not adjacent to it, but we are adjacent to the Bluffs, and so we're very close. I just wanted to go on record, and you should have a letter already in your file stating that our board was unanimously opposed to this rezoning due to the increase in traffic and the noise. We feel that you did a lot for the master plan, and that agricultural is the way to stay. We realize that there can be development down there, but it's with a special use permit or a conditional use permit, and that would give us a lot more control on what goes in there. So we would appreciate your support in supporting planning and zoning and denying this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Smith, Joanne Smith?
Can I turn my, I'm not signed over to the subdivision?
Did she sign, did she sign a comment card?
She didn't before the meeting, no.
Okay, that's fine. If you both want to come up, though, you, yeah, that's fine.
Good evening.
So she's going to be making the presentation instead of you, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, what's your name, ma'am?
Beverly Lofton.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Do you want, do I have to be sworn in?
No, this is comment, not a testimony.
All right. So I'm speaking as the previous gentleman, as a resident of the Bluffs. We had about 13 to 14 residents from the Bluffs and Oak Forest attend the Planning and Zoning Commission, which did vote seven to nine against this proposal. Seven to two, yeah. I'm sorry, there's nine people on the board, seven voted against it, two for it. And I think the reasons are really clear, but I'd like to go over them. First of all, the plans for this area are extremely nebulous. The first meeting on April 27th, which many, many residents went to at the library, described the use as anything from a bicycle shop to an amphitheater, like Hollywood Casino Amphitheater, with bands playing. Residents tried to explain that the noise would reverberate up the Bluffs, and that residents would be extremely perturbed about that. So at the next meeting, at the Planning Commission, we heard, and we got a letter about this, that they were taking out the amphitheater plan, but putting in a gazebo. Well, you can still put a band on a gazebo, and you can still amplify it, and we're still worried about the noise. Another issue that we're concerned about is light pollution, and the dangerous access to this area that Greens Bottom Road provides. Greens Bottom Road, if you're not familiar with it, has a flood ditch on one side, and a very deep cut down into the farm property, at which, if you get bumped off into that, you're going to be in really big trouble. I worry about that, because if Mr. McCoy gets to build a bicycle shop, and sports fields, and I think there was even an ice skating rink, and a rooftop bar, you know, I don't know where it's going to stop, and it seems like it's going to be attracting a huge number of people. Where are they going to park? And how are they going to access that on this very narrow road, with not a whole lot of shoulder that then drops off into two significant ditches? I think it's a recipe for disaster, and we, it's just, it's just very concerning that these plans aren't very clear.
Yeah, your three minutes are up. Can I just ask, are there any other speakers on this particular issue?
I would like to say that I presented a letter, I am on the Board of Trustees for the Bluffs, and I presented you all with a letter. Okay.
Yeah, we have that. Maybe, we have one other speaker?
I have one other, Ronald.
Is that you, sir? When we're finished with this, I want to do, ask Mr. White to give us kind of an update on this issue. I don't know if this is the particular time, but we wanted to make sure we heard the speakers on this. But, Mr. White, what were you going to request on this particular issue?
I believe that the applicant would like to ask us to...
Can you talk into your mic? Speak up.
The applicant would like us to table this bill. He'd like to talk to the residents in person about it, so when it comes time forward, I would like to bring it up and table it.
Do you understand that? So, Mr. White has indicated that he would be making a motion to table the bill to give the applicant more time to discuss issues with, with residents nearby. That would require a second, and I don't know if we have a second, but if that... You're going to second that?
I'll second.
So that means that we wouldn't read the bill today, and we would, it would be rescheduled for a later time.
I wanted to do that so you didn't wait around through the whole meeting, thinking that the bill was going to come up and have discussion on it.
We wouldn't be voting on it anyway today. If it wasn't removed, this is the first reading, and then we would be voting on it at the next meeting. So if it's removed from the agenda today, it will be back on another agenda, and there will still be two times it will be on before, once to be read, and then at the following meeting to be voted on. So it's going to give everybody more time on this, and it's going to delay the bill for some period of time, yeah.
What if the residents here don't want more time?
Well, the council member who sponsored the bill can make a motion to table it, and then if that motion carries, it will be tabled. So it's up to the council to do that.
It can either be tabled, or the applicant can just withdraw, one or the other.
I'm concerned that the Planning Commission already heard and voted on this, seven to two?
I can't hear your name.
But they're, they're making the comment in public comments, so that's why I just mentioned that if there were more people here who wanted to talk about it, that there was going to be a motion to table the bill. So if you want to have a seat then at this point, and we'll proceed with any other public comment.
Can I ask one more question about, what, the zoning commission vote doesn't have a lot of weight?
Ma'am, this is just for you to make public comment. We'll discuss the matter when it comes up on the agenda. Is there any other public comment? Ronald. Okay, sir, did you have a comment on this matter? Did you want to make a public comment, sir? Okay. I couldn't hear what he was saying either, yeah. Okay, that's fine, if you don't want to make a public comment, okay. Then we'll proceed with other public comments on other issues. Amy Robertson?
What's the issue?
We don't know.
Good evening. Good evening. Chairwoman Schneider, and gentlemen of the council, as you know, I've been reaching out to you all via email regarding my concerns with the rapidly devolving level of civility and decorum at these county council meetings. Some of you have been brave enough to respond to me, and I am very appreciative of that. Over the past several months, I have been deeply disheartened as I've watched one organization continually hold signs accusing public commenters of lying, heckling commenters, yelling out during speeches and while agenda items were being discussed, name-calling, and holding angry rallies outside the building, making it difficult for others to approach and enter. The irony of the situation is that the leaders and many members of this same group are seeking to stomp out a very real and concerning issue of bullying in our local school districts, but somehow fail to see that they, as adults, are modeling the very behavior they seek to abolish in children. I finally had enough when I attended the last council meeting, and a number of individuals came in wearing a shirt with a photo of a councilman on it, and the words "Got Jackass"? Can you imagine if a group of students got together and did that same thing to another child? That would certainly be considered bullying in one of its purest forms. On top of that, another member of their group came forward wearing a shirt announcing his gun-toting status, and shared that his favorite quote is suggestive of shooting elected officials, but did at least clarify that he's not ready to shoot our elected officials yet. He received a standing ovation. This was only seven days after 19 children and their teachers were senselessly slaughtered by a shooter in their school. were senselessly slaughtered by a shooter in their school. This is a problem. I'm not suggesting that these are bad people. In fact, one member of the group is a true and beloved friend of our family. Another is a teacher who inspired one of my children so much that my child is now going into the teaching field as well. I've had the privilege of speaking with one of the main leaders of the group one-on-one, and while we disagree on most things, I know that she is a mom just like me, who just wants what's best for her children. Councilman Brazel, you and I have had extensive conversations with one another, and it has been an unexpected honor getting to know who you really are rather than the showboating pompous character you put on in front of a crowd. I don't want to ruin your reputation, so let it be known on the record that Councilman Brazel and I disagree ideologically on almost every single thing we discussed. That said, I have seen that you can be kind. I've seen that you can get your message across and be understood without feeding that fire of anger and hate. I can understand your perspective and see you as a real person because you took off your angry layer and you just talked to me. When you're outside holding rallies and riling up an angry crowd or grandstanding in the chambers, you're breeding and feeding a monster that may become bigger and more dangerous than you can control. It's on you to tame that monster and ensure that it's safe and welcoming for every citizen to enter these chambers and share their grievances and concerns regardless of whether they align with your ideas. I don't honestly care whether or not an audit happens. I'm formally asking this council to again regain control of these meetings and make them safe once again.
Thank you. Jen Olson? Mr. Brazel? I was, I was, you know, bullied last time, and I didn't say anything, but if you feel you need to say something, go for it.
All I wanted to say is, what I wanted to say is, Amy, we really have had conversations, right? And our opinions are quite a bit on one end to the other, and we've spoken to each other kindly. But when I'm up here, I'm not sure, but I have a passion for what I believe in, and in a liberal's perspective, a passion is considered angry. It's not angry. I'm expressing my opinions because I believe in freedom and liberty and the Constitution. All right?
Next speaker. Jen Olson?
I want to begin by saying thank you to Mr. Brazel for having the moral fortitude to stand and fight for the will of the people even when nobody's willing to stand with you. You are a true servant of the people. We need more people in government like you. The only reason this country has lasted for as long as it has is because the citizens had confidence in the electoral process. We had a sense of power and control. The power and control that our Constitution demands is in the hands of we, the people. That's gone. We have been taken out of our electoral process and replaced by machines, machines that check us in and track who hasn't, hasn't voted, which is hackable, machines that count our votes, which are hackable, and machines even do the audits or at least provide the data for the audits and print out the tapes. This is unacceptable. If there's an issue with our election equipment, our officials have to contact the manufacturer or the software developers to fix it because apparently nobody knows how to work the machines. How can they certify that all of this is correct and true and accurate if they don't even know how to troubleshoot the machine that they're getting the information from? Last time I was here, I asked that someone please point me to the section of our county charter that says this body can't ask Kurt Barr to agree to a full forensic audit. Mr. Elam was kind enough to chat with me on the steps after the meeting, and he showed me the section that says the Director of Elections is separate from the council. That's fine and well, but it still doesn't answer my question, and it still doesn't give a valid reason for this body's absolute refusal to request an audit. The resolution by Mr. Brazel was simply asking for Kurt to do an audit, not compelling him to. Why are you all dead set on refusing to request the audit? Best-case scenario, he agrees. Worst-case scenario, we go back to the drawing board. The only logical reason I can come up with at this point is that you all don't want a full audit, and that just leaves me with more questions. I don't think you all or our state government or even our federal government understand how close we are to not existing as a free country. We have destroyed the Constitution bit by bit over the decades and left it unrecognizable to our founders. This is not the America they envisioned when they signed their names on our Declaration of Independence or when they ratified our Constitution. The government corruption and overreach is unbearable for the security of a free state. Government has become unapologetically tyrannical. We, the people, are demanding that this body ask Kurt Barr to do a full forensic audit. We want paper-hand tabulation, no more tabulating machines. We want paper poll books, no more poll pads, and we want free and fair elections that we can trust and understand. I leave you with wise words spoken by one of America's last true leaders, JFK. Those who make peaceful revolution impossible make violent revolution inevitable.
Next speaker, Mary Ann Boatwright.
Ben Franklin was asked, what kind of government did we get? He said, "A republic if you can keep it." Republics require active and citizen engagement. We can save our country one county at a time. I'm asking every citizen in this room to do the following: Email and call every council member, Steve Elman, Kurt Barr, and ask them if they've read Missouri Canvasser's report, and if not, why not? Demand a forensic audit of April election, including source code. Does our source code contain fractional voting or the option to switch votes, like many around the country? Don't let them respond lamely about proprietary information. These are our elections and our sovereignty. Demand removal of electronic voting machines and poll pads. Both can be compromised, as we saw in Augustan around the country. Poll pads are connected to the internet, and if hacked, identifies who voted and who hasn't voted. That's valuable information to anyone with nefarious intentions. Insist on voting Amish using only paper ballots. Otero County, New Mexico, just did this. Demand council vote no on Bill 5077, making St. Charles County a HUD-urban county. Thousands of apartments are being built. I wonder how many phantom voters will be there to dilute our votes. Our taxes should not be used to subsidize our own demise. This looks like a great way to turn a red county blue. Demand council vote no on Bills 5069, regionalizing St. Charles and St. Louis policing. Regionalization is part of Agenda 2030 and undermines our sovereignty, just like eliminating our constitutional sheriff undermined our sovereignty. Constitutional sheriffs around the country are investigating election fraud. If elected officials take an oath to the US and Missouri Constitution and are bonded by an insurance company with a surety bond, when elected officials violate that oath, you are duty-bound to take action. That action could be as simple as file an insurance claim against that elected official stating the violation. Elected officials must lawfully do their job. Rite of mandamus can be filed by a citizen without a lawyer. Other citizens attach affidavits to that writ. It goes to a judge, hopefully one that follows the law. If the judge agrees with your finding, judge will compel elected official to do their job. Pay attention to East-West Gateway, where many Agenda 2030 initiatives are hatched and work their way to this council via Steve Elman and John White, who are on their committees with none other than Sam Page. Pay attention to words like green, sustainability, smart growth, regionalization. This playbook is used to erode our rights, leaving our legacy of tyranny and slavery for our children and grandchildren. Children have suffered enough being masked, traced, quarantined, sexually groomed with pornography, indoctrinated with transgenderism, LGBTQ, till they are so confused they practice self-harm and commit suicide sometimes. It sounds like something a creepy pervert would do. No, it's actually our tax dollars at work in some of our school districts. We're given ample opportunity for elected officials to actually represent their constituents and do the right thing. If they refuse to cease and desist in destruction of St. Charles County, we must vote them out by supporting real patriots with hearts, servants' hearts. Truth has a funny way of bubbling to the surface, and once you know it, you can't know it.
Your time is up, ma'am. Please be seated.
Help restore election integrity.
Please be seated, ma'am. Your time is up.
Redemption is a wonderful gift.
Judith Moorefield. Please be seated, ma'am. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Call the next speaker. Judith Moorefield?
Hi, ma'am.
Good evening.
There are so many other things I'd rather be doing, but I'm here because I have a responsibility to speak up, even if it's uncomfortable, inconvenient, and tiresome. But the question I have is, why are you here? Why did you take the position of county council representative? We're constantly dealing with two sides on every issue. Take the mask and vax mandates, for instance. One side says they're safe and effective, the other side says they're harmful and even deadly. Both sides cannot be right. Evidence reveals that masks are harmful, I'm on top of this thing, and there has been over 1 million adverse reactions and tens of thousands of deaths due to the vax. The manufacturers and killers pushing the vax knew that there would be deaths and injuries and just lied about it. Now, the long-term reactions are being called by other names like monkeypox, AIDS, hepatitis, adult sudden death syndrome, and some people don't connect the dots, but rather blindly follow the propaganda. They don't value the truth and resent those who speak it. Take the other big issue of voter integrity.
Sir, please be quiet.
One side says there's nothing to see, while the other side has produced massive evidence of fraud from totally independent sources. Why does the other side lie, cover up, destroy evidence, try to prevent verification of the records, and try to shut us up or discredit us? Why don't you wonder what they're hiding, like we wonder? We are following the Constitution, by the way, by bringing our grievances to you, so you don't have to fear us like BLM or Antifa, who destroy, kill, and break the law, but are not punished for it. Why do you squander the opportunity for us to raise you up as a standard? So, we wonder, if only three out of eight of you are on this council and actually voted, then maybe you don't value votes like we do. Why not? Are you apathetic? You took an oath to defend the Constitution, which means defending the individual rights of us, the people, and our votes, and yet you won't help us get our votes audited and secured. If you don't care enough now, when the commies and globalists are systematically working to destroy this republic, you will care when they steal your property and your money becomes worthless, and you won't be able to say, "We didn't know." God says of the wicked, "What right have you to tell of my statutes and to take my covenant in your mouth? For you hate discipline, and you cast my words behind you. When you see a thief, you are pleased with him. These things you have done, and I kept silence. You thought that I was just like you. I will reprove you and state the case in order before your eyes. Ultimately, all will be revealed, all the lies and even the secret intents of our hearts."
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Uneven weights and balances.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Yeah, the mic was down for about 15 seconds.
Your time is up, ma'am. Please be seated. Dan White?
Who turned it down?
Your time, I don't think anybody turned it down, ma'am.
Has somebody, just... Wait a second, sir. Wait a second. You want to use that one? Does that one work?
Thank you. Mic check. Can I take it off?
In the meantime, somebody is going back to check on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. State your name, sir.
Council members, thank you.
What's your name, sir?
My name is Dan White, and, and I have been a Missouri Canvasser volunteer. In the process of verifying voter records for the April 5th, 2022 municipal election in St. Charles County, as mentioned at the last county meeting, we have found that there are no votes recorded for five out of the eight county officials. That is the seven council members and the county executive. Now, we did canvass Councilman Joe Brazel, and he confirmed he did not vote due to a change of address issue, but that still means that four votes have not been recorded. We urge you to launch an investigation as to how these votes were apparently lost. Would you like me to list the names of those of you who have no vote recorded? That's a question. If you like, I can. If you don't feel comfortable with it. Would any of you like to ask me directly now if your vote was lost?
Sir, this is your public comment. It's not an opportunity to have a discussion.
Okay, and none of that will be revealed. If you need to know more about lost votes, you can find it on pages seven and 25 of the, can I get this up?
It takes a second.
Okay. Of this wonderful report that we put together, the Missouri Canvasser's Report. Page seven and 25 explains what a lost vote is. Okay? And I'll add that we located 280 St. Charles residents with voting issues, 27 of whom had lost votes. That means they voted, but no vote was recorded. Okay? And I would urge you to, once again, launch an investigation and to see as to how some of your votes were apparently lost. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker.
Lori Nicewanner?
Is this working?
I don't know. You might want to go ahead and use that one. I think somebody's still back there.
My name's Lori Nicewanner.
Hold it up to your mouth.
Okay. I back the blue. When attacks on law enforcement and the idea of defunding the police reared its ugly head in 2020, a group of patriots and I collected protein bars and other easy-to-grab items such as energy drinks and delivered them to the St. Charles County Police Station to show that their sacrifice was not unnoticed by us. I say a prayer every time I see an officer stopping a motorist and ask God to see him or her home safely. When I'm pulled over, I do all that I can to show that officer that I am not a threat. So, it's really disturbing to me that apparently the St. Charles County Police Station did not have our backs. Joe Cronin actually laughed about attacking Arnie at our last meeting. I witnessed the last few seconds of that right outside this door, where Joe Cronin had him backed into a corner, and it took another, he had to be forcibly pulled away by another county council member. While, while he was being pulled away, he was continuing to yell threats right outside that room in this building while at least two police officers did nothing. And as far as I know, there was never a report made. One of them did speak to me afterwards, but very reluctantly, and it didn't look like he was really interested in pursuing it. I will still continue to back the blue because I believe most of our law enforcement do not behave this cowardly. And most importantly, I believe in upholding the law, even when those who are on this council who think that the law does not apply to them. I wonder how much influence this very same council has had in ensuring that no charges have been made against Mr. Cronin. This council continues to make strenuous efforts to prevent us from speaking out about the April election, and why is that? The logical answer is that you know our election was not secure and you do not care. In the Bible, Psalm 57 mentions that the enemy of God has dug a pit in our paths, but God's purpose for that very same pit is the one into which the enemy will fall. God is hearing our prayers, so keep digging.
Amber Crawford?
May I play two fakers? Two minutes?
Ma'am, do you want to use that microphone there? No, you, you have three minutes, ma'am. You have three minutes, and it's, it's going to start when you...
I want you to know that how dangerous and how cyber-vulnerable the UNISAN equipment is. International lottery... ILTS is a subsidiary of whole owned by Bergeria Corporation. Bergeria is headquartered in Malaysia by what's actually registered in China. ILTS wholly owned subsidiary Unison was the equipment manufacturer that we used, and ILTS also owns 75% of the voting machines. Also, ILTS have granted ESNS, which is one of the biggest voting certification corporations. ILTS granted ESNS an exclusive worldwide license to manufacture, sell, and sub-license to ESNS end customers and the intellectual property relating to the voting software it designed. I'd like to play a video of how vulnerable our voting system is, and it is connected to the Internet as we know. The e-poll pads requires Wi-Fi connection.
Could you turn it on, please?
It takes a second. It does not have to stand by checking for handwriting or anything. And so people are learning about this through the phenomena of the 2000s documentary, but those are the three inputs. The second part is usually when you go to voting center, you've got two nice lovely ladies that have e-poll books or poll pads. That's where you sign up, and you can have accounting of who shows up, and more importantly, who doesn't show up, and we'll talk about why this is a vulnerability. These e-poll books are hooked to the Internet. No one disputes that fact as a matter of election law, they have to be. And there are things that can happen as a result of these being hooked up to the Internet. So when we talk about the machines being hooked to the Internet, we really have to emphasize there are several machines that are at use during this process. So I want you to put your black hats on and think about potential vulnerabilities by having this device hooked up to the Internet. Erin's going to share with you a real-life example in New Mexico during her presentation of a candidate that was running for office for clerk in Santa Fe, who was also a political operative and a Democrat official, that was receiving poll book data that you get from these, real-time throughout election day, which is illegal, unethical. You guys know that you can't campaign at election places, yet this person was getting real-time poll data. But we looked at the digital record and what we saw in that particular county in Santa Fe, votes disappearing and reappearing in different ways, and we'll actually provide that data. That's a potential vulnerability that is real, it's happening, it's happening in New Mexico. One of the things that you can do by...
Ma'am, your time is up, please turn that off.
Together, I think the most extensive...
Ma'am, turn it off, your time is up, thank you. Arnie Dinoff.
Take your phone with you.
Forward county election...
Have a seat, ma'am, have a seat, ma'am, have a seat, ma'am.
Good evening, members of council. Madam Chairwoman, my name is Arnie CAC Dinoff, county public advocate, running to be the next county executive of St. Charles County. Chief Fries, where is the police investigation for threat and for threat of assault and future violence by Joe Cronin that was observed by Terry Hollander? I'd like to know, if you profess to be a national accredited organization, why you're sweeping this investigation under the rug? Chief Fries, I and other residents who were witnesses are still awaiting an investigation and do not want you to bury this incident under the rug and under the public scrutiny. Now, when it comes to Kalia, how much did we pay Kalia? $40,000 to $60,000? I'm making a public information request of how much we paid Kalia. Why should we have to pay to be a rubber-stamped and accredited police department? It's a scam. If we're doing the right things, they should be giving us the accreditation with no charge to taxpayers. Where was the public hearing? Were you notified of the public hearing to go and testify? I certainly was not. Now, I want to correct myself from the 5/31/22 meeting where I said to Joe Cronin, I want to apologize to Joe Cronin for stating that his mom has not voted in 20 years. That was incorrect. Joe Cronin stated at the May 9 county council meeting that his mom, that she doesn't, she does not miss an election for nothing. Joyce A. Cronin, voter number 46515608, Joe Cronin's mom, stopped voting on 11/6 of 12 10 years ago and is in the inactive status. Secrets of county government continue, continue, continue with Steve Elman. First of all, why don't we purchase in St. Charles County? Over $10 million on the consent agenda with no or little debate, no questions from our elected officials. That's shameful. On the Parks and Recreation, Parks of New Melly Lakes, $536,000. When blocks away, you have a large county highway garage with a third of the space available to the county parks at zero cost, saving us money. On the Parks and Recreation change order, $150,000? Who's making the profits is what I want to ask, because they're not, they're no longer the lowest bidder, they're the highest bidder now. Bill number 5068, $100,000 to the University of Missouri Extension Service just is not enough money. Bill number 5070, $4 million, we need answers, not to write a blank check. And finally, we need to look after our port authority because they want to give tax-exempt status, tax credits, and give away free taxes for your buddies.
Your time is up, sir, thank you. That's the final speaker.
Moving on then to the next item on the agenda, oral report from the county executive.
Madam Chairman, I have no oral report, but could I make a suggestion that we take a short recess?
Sure.
Given the heat in the room and the fact that some people may want to leave.
No, we don't...
May I suggest...
Get it over with.
Shh. Go ahead.
May I suggest that we take a short recess, given the length of the meeting and the heat in the room, and take a recess and give people a chance to...
That's fine.
Is there a motion to do that? I think everyone would rather just proceed.
That's fine, obviously.
Anything else, sir?
No.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda then would be the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I have some, Nancy. I'd like to remove information systems and, oh, no, I'm sorry, yeah, information systems on a three-year Microsoft licensing, and I'd like to remove the corrections, the $2,199 on the healthcare services.
Second.
With respect to the information systems, you're seconding that motion?
Yeah.
And the other one as well?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to remove two items from the consent agenda. All in favor of removing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, they'll be removed. Is there a motion concerning... Is there a motion concerning the remaining items on the agenda?
Motion to approve the remaining items. Second.
Any comments or discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, those items then will be passed. There is one item that was removed from the consent agenda last time. Is there a motion to remove that from the table?
There's more than one, I believe there's three. I'd like to remove, I'd like to take, remove them off the removal list, put them back on the agenda for final passage.
Okay, so that would be Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation and Facilities, those three items?
Yes.
Is there a second to...
Second.
Okay. Is there any comments on that?
Well, we did, are we going to talk about the first ones we took off the agenda? Or are we just going to go up and do that, or you want to talk about these?
Well, we removed them from the agenda, so...
I know, but we're going to talk about them.
Talk about them, slow down on it for each individual one. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, we just, the vote was just to remove them from the agenda. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead then, Mr. Brazel, excuse me.
That's fine. On the, Matt, are you here? Yeah, run up here, please. On this relicensing, explain that in detail, why that is, it's actually like 2.6 million, isn't it? It says 2.1, but doesn't it, it doesn't, what's it get to, 2.6?
No, it's 2.3 million over three years.
Okay, so explain that to me, please.
So we have 1,260 users in the county government that have an email account and require Microsoft Word Office accounts. So the bulk of the annual cost is for those users to have email and those Office products. The second portion of that is an annual cost for server licensing. So we have roughly 200 servers in the county infrastructure, and those require a Microsoft server license that we have to pay annually. So those, together, those make up the 800, roughly 870,000 a year that comes up to 2.3. I will note in the packet, I included some information that right before I started in May of 2019, we entered into a three-year agreement for 4.5 million. I came into the county with a different approach, the way that we run IS now than when we did previously, and I appreciate the county executive and the executive staff for supporting me in that venture because now we're doing a three-year agreement for 2.5, which is a savings of 2.2 million.
Okay. And so these 1,200 employees or how, 1,200 employees?
1,260.
Is it all, is it all like they have, they have the ability to use PowerPoint? Are they all at the same level, or do we, do they increment into a higher level on the program?
No, we don't increment it, it's the same across the board for every user. They all require, I mean, now, not every user may use PowerPoint, but it's packaged together with the Office product, so that's what every user receives.
I see, okay.
Madam Chair.
Okay, yes, Mr. Cronin.
Every business, every organization that's going to use servers and use Microsoft system and people that use Microsoft terminals have to pay these fees. I do have my own business as well. I did have some questions in the last go-around, okay? But you did a real good job trimming a couple million bucks off this, and I appreciate your efforts, okay?
Any other questions for this speaker? Is there any action on this item?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second to approve. All in favor of approving that item, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then concerning the second item that was removed on corrections, is there a question about that or a discussion?
No, it is a question. We talked about the...
Councilman, would you like Mr. Cronin is coming?
Yeah.
Sorry.
We talked about, is this the same thing that we just talked about several months ago, eight, seven months ago or something?
A few months ago, we extended the mental health part of the contract so we can finalize this.
So is this in addition to that?
No, what's going to happen is if this is approved, all those contracts that we have for mental health and medical that start collapsing into this. Okay. Right now, we currently pay up to $2.6 million, including our mental health. By going up to this comprehensive health, all of our medical services are covered or are paying $2.1 million. So there's about $485,000 savings to the...
Well, do you remember at the last contract that you presented to us several months ago, it was what, $600 an hour they were charging us? And I noticed that...
It was $330 an hour.
But you took that out of the contract, I don't see that in there anymore.
Yeah, well, by the comprehensive health, they're alone. We're going to pay them, and they're going to get their own, like Tyra Tris and others, like always.
Okay, so is there a chance that we're going to possibly be able to, why are we, we're selling out all these employees and stuff, isn't there a point, like we sold out our janitorials or selling out mental health, isn't there a point where we would have our own staff on hand in an operation like this with this kind of cost?
Well, we have, currently we have four nurses that work for us right now. We've been trying to recruit, and we've been recruiting, but I mean, one of our challenges is just our wants, so we're going to go open, you know, they're paying $100 a hour.
Mr. Cronin.
Dan, put that up. Sorry. So, yeah, I mean, we've had openings for RNs and LPNs, but just like I mentioned just a couple minutes ago, the hospital right down the road from us is offering much more higher salary than what we can offer at this point.
I know, but if by the time you get your contract out to a subcontract, you're paying $330 an hour, and you're saying that the hospital's paying $100, that's my point, why wouldn't we? I'm just saying, I know you can't do it right now, I understand that, but it's something we should consider where we should have our own employees working for the county so we're not selling all this, all these contractors out.
Understood, understood.
Mr. Cronin.
I questioned Dan Keen about this earlier prior to the meeting via some emails, and there's a couple big things I think we need to realize. One, this is a savings of almost a half a million dollars to us, okay? Two is in the present employment environment, we're here having trouble getting guards, let alone nurses and medical staff, so that takes care of that problem. And the third biggest thing about it, and Dan answered this today, is this company will be insuring and indemnifying the county against any problems of unforeseen legal expenses down the road, which is a huge thing, okay? So I commend you for putting this all together because I think it's, number one, you're going to save the county half a million bucks, number two, should provide better medical and psychiatric care for the prisoners, and number three is it's given us another layer of legal protection, okay, down the road. So, good job, Dan, okay?
Thank you.
And number four, we're required to provide these services for inmates. It's not something that we do because we're nice, we do it because we have to. I also had a question. I think I was under the impression that if you have any people currently who are doing that, they're not going to be laid off.
No, they're not going to be laid off.
So, okay, so this would be in addition to that?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone have any other questions for Dan?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay, thank you. Okay, so then back, Mr. Cronin and I spoke prematurely. The items that were previously removed from the consent agenda, there are three of those. You wish to discuss those?
Yes, ma'am. I talked to Ryan Graham extensively about the two Parks and Recreation one, and there were some questionable expenses I had questions about, he answered those sufficiently. And as far as the facilities, this is the first awarded contracts under the new energy conservation companies that we've been talking about since last fall. So Christina gave us a lot of information about it, I appreciate that, Mr., okay, ma'am, I read it all, and it was a hell of a lot of it. But I mean, under the circumstance, and I talked to Bob about this too, if we don't, if we don't go through this, A, we may not get the equipment, B, we won't be price protected, and all this equipment's like everything else is going up through the roof. And I think more convincingly is we don't fix this, we're going to be sweating at the next meeting as well, too, we probably already anyway, so I'm good with it all. I think down the road, we can learn from this first one and the first and second one, and maybe the next, the third, fourth, fifth, all the way down the road to ninth one will go smoother, but after talking to Joanne, Bob, and Christine, I'm good with it, okay?
So are you making a motion then?
I'm making a motion for all three of them to put it back.
We can discuss in a second.
I'm making a motion for all three. We can do them one at a time, okay?
Okay, I'd rather do one.
Just put it back on the agenda.
All right. Okay, so then you want to start with the Park at New Melly Lakes?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
A second to bring it up, I'd like to talk about it because I went out there.
Yeah, go ahead.
I went out there, I met Ryan out there. Just so you folks understand, the maintenance bill, when I, when they saw this, I thought it was like a big metal shed, and I thought, my goodness, that's a lot of money. Well, I met with Ryan, Ryan Graham, and New Melly Lakes is about, I think it's 400 or 500 acres, and just so you folks understand, the Proposition Y was passed several years ago, and it is only park, we can only spend park money that's brought in on that tax, it's a tri-county park tax, and I think the county gets about $3 million something a year, is that about right, Ryan, something like that? So just so you know, the people voted for that about 10, I don't know, years ago, so this money is coming out of that fund, it has to be spent on parks. And fortunately, these are all in my district, so I'm in favor of doing some nice parks out there. We have, when I started here, we didn't have any parks, we started a Parks Department, we got about 3,000 or 4,000 acres, is that right, right now? we got about 3,000 or 4,000 acres, is that right, right now? Um, so, this is not a, just a building, it's a complex with roads and water and sewer, and it's, it's really a nice deal. And New Melli, uh, we don't really have any, we don't, they tore down the old structure, so there's nothing to put any of our equipment in, or to have any kind of a, a complex there. So, I, I'm, after we had that conversation, I think it's, it's, it's good. On the timber, the timber frame building, I was concerned about that, me and Dave talked about it, the, the extra work order was, had, said it had a deflection in the deck. Well, the architect drew it where they had quarter-inch, three, four-by-eight sheets, spanned four feet, four feet, which is ridiculous, and that's how they drew it, that's how the contractor bid it, it's, so they had to, after they got the job going, there was tongue and groove, and then it changed to plywood, so that, there was just a miss on that. It, that, that was an error on the architect's, but we don't have any kind of bond or nothing, so we have to absorb that extra, and then they're going to put, uh, new siding on the inside, rather than leave it unsided. So, these are all legitimate extras, uh, we went over all that stuff, and so, I'm good with those two. As far, do you want me to talk about facilities, or should I just stop?
I thought you wanted to take them one at a time, so...
I'm sorry, I did say that, yep, I'm sorry.
Okay, so is, there's a motion, then, uh, on the change order for the Mattson Hill, to, to bring that back to the table? Is there a second on that?
I got a comment on that first.
Yeah, go ahead. I was just getting the second, we can keep discussing it, go ahead.
Uh, Ryan, I'd recommend in the future, if you have a problem like that, uh, consult with the, a couple of the building inspectors, there, there's a couple of those guys that are master carpenters, that could come out and look at that, and, and I think it would have made this go a lot smoother, if we had had something from, uh, from you, that you had a building inspector out there, and he verified that, yeah, there's a problem, so... That's all I have.
You got a thumbs up on that, okay. So, do we want to go ahead and, and, um, vote on these two, and then we can discuss the last one separately?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second, then, to, um, approve the parks and recreation, uh, concerning the matter at New Melli Lakes, and the Mattson Hill Timber Barn. First, on, um, New Melli Lakes, all in favor of approving that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And on the issue of the Mattson Hill Timber Barn, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those two matters are approved, then, facilities. Uh, is there a motion to bring that up for discussion?
Motion to bring up for, up, off the table?
So, a second, okay. Comments?
I'm, I'll make some comments. Um, just so you folks know, we did have, this has been talked about, this has not just come up, we've talked, been talking about this for years, and I think the COVID nonsense stopped all, everything. Um, the facilities have been kind of the deferred maintenance, it should have been, they should have been having a five-year plan, where more stuff was happening annually, where you're spending maybe 500,000 per building, rather than put it all together, but this is a whole package on doing a whole bunch of stuff on all the buildings, because, as you can see, all of our HVAC, a lot of our stuff is completely outdated, it needs to be done. They went through the bid process through the ESCO groups, Schneider has got the awarded contract, all the mechanical contractors and contractors are union quality contractors, I checked all the, who got all the bids, they're all local St. Louis contractors, and so, I'm very comfortable with the process, and as you can tell, while we're all here sweating, we need to do something with the mechanical in here, it's been bad for years. So, that's what this is about, also, with the problems we're having with, uh, with our, with the world, um, it's very difficult to get air conditioner units and stuff, it takes six to seven months, and I guess, Christine, you know that, we're, this probably won't even start till next year, I, I, unless they, you know, so that's an issue. So, we, we get it now, we get the, get the POs out, and the prices are locked, prices are skyrocketing, and you know they're going to keep going, so I think this is, this is something we just got to do, we have to do it, so, yeah.
Is there any other discussion? Okay. Now, call the question, all in favor of approving the facilities change order, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, moving on then to bills for final passage. Bill number 5065.
Bill number 5065, an ordinance amending section 500.150, residential code for one and two family dwellings of chapter 500 Building Codes and County Building Commission of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri.
Is there any discussion? Please call the question.
Bill number 5065, an ordinance amending section 500.150, residential code for one and two family dwellings of chapter 500 Building Codes and County Building Commission of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri. Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Bill passes. Bill number 5066. Bill number 50666, an ordinance of the County of St. Charles, Missouri, approving the preliminary plat for summer oaks. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please, uh, read the title and call the roll. Bill number 5066, an ordinance of the County of St. Charles, Missouri, approving the preliminary plat for summer oaks. Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Bill passes. Bill number 5067. Bill number 5067, an ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri highways and transportation commission state block grant agreement, airport improvement program grant project 21-111A-2, CFDA 20.106, to design taxi lane pavements at St. Charles County Regional Airport Smart, Smart Field. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please, uh, read the title and call the roll. Bill number 5067, an ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri highways and transportation commission state block grant agreement, airport improvement program grant project 21-111A-2, CFDA 20.106, to design taxi lane pavements at St. Charles County Regional Airport Smart Field. Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Bill carries. Bill number 5069, please read the bill. 68. Bill number 5068, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute annual agreements with the University of Missouri Extension Council of St. Charles County, to provide educational programs and services not to exceed $100,000.
Any discussion?
Uh, I'd just like to mention that the, the exhibit from, uh, bill number 5069 has been revised.
We're on 68.
Oh, we're on 68, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I said the wrong number.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, we went back. We're on 5068. Any discussion? Okay, please read the title and call the roll.
Bill number 5068, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute annual agreements with the University of Missouri Extension Council of St. Charles County, to provide educational programs and services not to exceed $100,000. Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Bill passes. Now, bill number 5069.
Bill number 5069, an ordinance authorizing the county executive, executive to execute agreements with other political subdivisions for the purpose of participating in the regional information and intelligence center. Mr. Hammond?
I just want to state that the exhibit from bill number 5069 has been revised, deleting Article 5.
All right. So, I think then, thank you. Did anyone want to comment on that?
I got some comments.
Go ahead.
Chief, you got a moment? Um, I did call, I, there were some questions and concerns, um, one of them in which was, uh, it had terrorism in there, and, and, uh, we talked about that, because in today's world, if you got someone like Sam Page making decisions, you don't want to school, the, the angry mamas would be considered, uh, domestic terrorists. So, um, Kurt agreed with me, and, well, you go ahead and explain what we...
Yeah, so the, or the regional intelligence center is, so, what it, what it does, it, this directly impacts our officers on the road. When you're talking the other stuff, terrorism, that's all fusion, you know, we participate in a lot of federal and state and local task force, and most of those task forces assist our investigators. The, uh, the, well, our proposal is to have two investigators assigned inside the RIC, which would be a sergeant, so we'll have a supervisory role, and a detective, and, uh, the...
The benefit of this is they can talk...
They can speak directly to the officers on the road when they see a crime in progress. Uh, last year, the, the, the investigators in the center were directly responsible for almost 200 felony arrests that were crimes in progress. Uh, and then, uh, more locally here, in the last couple weeks, at Indian Camp Creek Park, we had about 10 vehicles broken. We had one witness that was able to get a, a suspicious vehicle plate, it was out of Florida. Uh, we contacted the investigators in the Real-Time Crime Center, or the RIC, as I call it, uh, they were able to track that vehicle through the RIC and put it into a hotel in Maryland Heights, and we successfully arrested, uh, three Haitians that were in town, and they were just pillaging all the county and state parks in the area. So, that was a good, a good example of what the, the RIC can do for our officers on the road, because they, they can speak directly to the, uh, the investigators there, and investigators there can speak directly to the officers over the police radio. So, it adds a, a huge amount of officer safety, especially when, um, they're live with, uh, a camera system, and they can observe it, or the, the officers can call in and say, here's what I got, can you see if you can jack this vehicle anywhere? So, this benefits the road officers.
And then the two, other two items was, where it said designate, um, that was one thing, you, you talked to Roy, you clarified that.
Yeah, that, that was, uh, just for the authorizing document, if this gets approved, uh, if Mr. Elman was on vacation, out of town, his designate would be able to sign the authorizing document. That has nothing to do with the St. Louis County Executive.
Just on, just on this issue here, right? And then, also, if there are any changes with the contract, uh, it would have to go through Steve, the County Executive Steve, and then, and then approve by the County Council , significant changes, correct?
Yeah, anything that would change the mission of the operation, the scope of the operation, that our investigators are working, would come back to council.
Okay, and then, so, we, you know, people are concerned about, um, St. Louis County, rightfully so, with, with who the, who's in charge over there, but just to be clear here, guys, um, our chief is in charge of the SWAT team, our regional SWAT team, because it's housed out of our, it's our stuff, and, and, and we do that, we're in control of the SWAT team, we're in control of the, uh, computer crimes, what do you give me?
Cybercrime unit, the regional drug task force, uh, we have command and control of that. Uh, this is something we're looking to join into, and St. Louis County has command and control, St. Louis County is also bringing, uh, millions of dollars into this center to build it out from where it exists today. It's in their headquarters, it's going to be an off-site, uh, building that would be purchased and built out, uh, with federal and state dollars, grant funding, they've secured a lot of it already. So, this is something that's going to grow, and there's going to be other partners in this besides St. Louis County and St. Charles County, a lot of the key municipal partners will, will join in the RIC as it gets built out.
And our cost is just a patrol officer and a detective, which you already have on staff anyway, correct?
Yes, that was approved in the budget.
Yeah, and so, yeah, so that's, that's, that other, and then other thing you think about is, you know, I, I can understand people being concerned, the decision, when it says county executive, is not, it's not Sam Page making the decisions, I believe it's a joint decision between the both of you, right, Steve? So, yeah, and that's some concerns. And then, um, the other thing is, is, um, uh, if there's a crime committed in St. Louis County, um, or out in St. Charles County, you want law enforcement, someone gets kidnapped or whatever, you want law enforcement to be able to communicate with each other. You made a good point, you said crime is not on boundaries, it's regional, so they have to be communicating, it's very important.
Yeah, we, we already do, and this just takes it to the next level of being able to communicate and cooperate with our, uh, regional law enforcement partners. Um, when we set up our auto theft task force, so a year and a half ago, it's been very successful, made, uh, just about 200 felony arrests doing that, that come out to steal from our residents, uh, you know, break into, break into cars and, uh, commit other crimes, lots of narcotics, lots of, uh, legal weapons. Um, nobody runs west from us, they all run east. So, a lot of the, a good percentage of the people we arrest are from St. Louis County, St. Louis City, and without sharing information, because a lot of them run from us and they get away from us, but we can share the pertinent information, vehicle description, license plate information, and they, the, the regional intelligence information center could put that out right away to all the partners in, whether it be North County or all the way down to the city, and our apprehension rate is very successful because of these partnerships.
Thank you, Kurt.
I think, any other questions for the chief, or comments, before we, uh, read and vote on the bill? Yeah.
Question, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Elman, yeah.
Chief, just to make it clear, we're not, neither you nor I...
Neither you nor I or anyone else in St. Charles County is losing any control, this is about information.
No. Yeah, this is about information sharing, uh, while the actual center has, will have a St. Louis County commander, we're in a lot of partnerships like that, where, uh, whether we have command and control, being a lieutenant or a captain, or St. Louis County has command and control, that's just kind of the way it works in local law enforcement, uh, no different than us having command and control of the St. Charles County Regional SWAT team and the St. Charles County Regional Drug Task Force.
Any other discussion? Okay. Thank you, chief. Please, uh, read the title and call the roll.
Bill number 5069, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute agreements with other political subdivisions for the purpose of participating in the regional information and intelligence center. Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes, thank you. Bill passes. Uh, next is bill number 5070.
Bill number 5070, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement with the Community and Children's Resource Board and the Developmental Disabilities Resource Board, both of St. Charles County, to act as a sub-recipient of American Rescue Plan Act funds to identify services and service issues affecting children and/or persons with intellectual disabilities.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that, uh, to amend bill 5070 and replace it Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend bill 5070 and replace it with substitute bill number 5070.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or amendment of the substitute a council member would like to offer at this time? Hearing, no amendments, all in favor of the substitution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, we'll vote on the passage of substituted bill number 5070. Claire, would you please read the title and call the roll?
Substitute bill number 5070, in ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement with the Community and Children's Resource Board and the Developmental Disabilities Resource Board, both of St. Charles County, to act as a subrecipient of American Rescue Plan Act funds to identify services and service issues affecting children and/or persons with intellectual disabilities. Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Councilwoman Schneider. I'm abstaining because I'm a member of the CCRB.
And Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
The bill passes. Bill number 5071.
Bill number 5071, in ordinance amending the 2022 budget as adopted by ordinance 21-098 as amended for repair of potholes, replacement of deteriorating concrete road slabs, and reconstruction of segments of county roads and subdivision streets with poor pavement condition.
Is there an amendment to this bill?
I'd like to make a motion to amend bill number 5071 and replace with substitute bill 5071.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or amendment of the substitute that a council member would like to offer at this time? Hearing, none, all in favor of the substitution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, now we'll vote on the passage of substitute bill number 5071.
Substitute bill number 5071, ordinance amending the 2022 budget as adopted by ordinance 21-098 as amended, and amending the 2022 through 2024 Transportation Improvement Plan for fiscal years 2022 through 2024 for repair of potholes, replacement of deteriorating concrete road slabs, or reconstruction of segments of county roads and subdivision streets with poor pavement condition, and authorizing corresponding intergovernmental agreements. Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
The bill passes. Bring on the repair of the potholes. Hope we get started with that pretty soon. Final bill for passage tonight is bill number 5072.
Bill number 5072, in ordinance amending the 2022 budget adopted by ordinance 21-098 to add one deputy bailiff, pay grade 206, within the St. Charles County Sheriff Department for the assignment to the new Circuit Court Division 15 Associate Circuit Judge.
Is there any discussion? I just wanted to make a note that the reason for this is because of the population increase in St. Charles County. Under the Constitution, we're entitled to a, an additional Associate Circuit Judge. Back in the day, when I was on the bench, we had about one-third as many judges as they had in the city of St. Louis. As you all know, over the last 20-some years, the population in the city of St. Louis has gone way down, where ours has skyrocketed, which is the reason that we're entitled to another judge. And by law, the judge is entitled to have a bailiff. Is there any other comment on this bill? Would you please read the title and call the roll?
Bill number 5072, in ordinance amending the 2022 budget adopted by ordinance 21-098 to add one deputy bailiff, pay grade 206, within the St. Charles County Sheriff Department for the assignment to the new Circuit Court, Circuit Court Division 15 Associate Circuit Judge. Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
That completes voting on the bills for final passage. Now, moving on to bills for introduction, bill number 5076.
Bill number 5076, requested by Michael Horbert, sponsored by John White. In ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A Agricultural District with Floodway Fringe Overlay District to PR Park Recreational District with Floodway Fringe Overlay District per application RZ 22-10.
Yes, Mr. White.
I would like to ask for a motion to table this bill.
We had some discussion about that earlier, so there's a motion that we pass this. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a comment.
Yes.
Okay. I took a little time and looked up what PR district would allow, and it's pretty wide. Ball fields, campgrounds, storage of boats, restaurants, stables, sewage plants, boat dealers, topsoil sales. I'm not a big fan of these rezonings without some site plans or something that, so the neighbors know what's going to go in. So, John, if you're going to meet with those folks, you know, if you want my support on this, I'd like to know a little specifically, what are those PR uses these folks are planning on doing?
I think everybody does.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, then, bill number 5077.
No, we haven't voted on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to vote on your motion to remove it, okay. So, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, motion to table.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that bill then is tabled. The next bill for introduction is bill number 5077.
Bill number 5077, requested by Michael Horbert, sponsored by Joe Cronin, and ordinance authorizing the execution of cooperation agreements with various cities to support an application by St. Charles County to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for qualification as an urban county under the department's community development block grant programs.
Is there discussion?
You have a question?
Yes.
What exactly, who is, who's in charge of the?
Mr. Horbert will come up. I'm not saying you're in charge, I'm inviting you to come up.
Hi, Michael.
How we doing?
Good.
Can everybody hear me?
Think so.
What is the exact purpose of this?
So, the urban county is a collection of the local governments and the St. Charles County to receive community development block grant from, funds from Housing and Urban Development. We get just over a million dollars a year. It goes to social service programming. So, basically, anybody that has repairs needed for housing problems, deferred maintenance, things like a lot of the code enforcement cases that we have, if people are income-challenged, they can qualify for money through social service programs through this grant. And so, it also takes care of transportation for elderly, for sick and handicapped individuals. It works for Meals on Wheels and programs like that. It is not a government handout for people that aren't income-qualified, that aren't in distress, or something like that. This is for emergency purposes, to help people get through rough patches.
Does this have anything to do, do you know, you may or may not know this, but in our county, in the last 2000, 17, 18, and 19, we built approximately 300 apartment units a year. Now, 2020 and 21, 1,200 apartment units, so we're up 300 percent.
And we're ahead of that pace this year.
And why do we know, do we know why, or does this have, I mean, are apartments being subsidized for?
It has nothing to do with the CDBG program. That's, there is an affordable, there's a rental assistance program that's part of this, that all that does is supplement people that are having trouble paying their rent. So, it's not procuring or additional housing or multifamily units, that's not part of this.
Mr. Cronin.
This isn't nothing new, we've been doing this since 2010. And the cities and the county rely on this, because it's a shared program, to, for instance, fix up a senior citizen's home in St. Peters, Old Fallon, okay? And as far as, you know, the growth of apartments, I've got two young urban professionals that are kids of mine, they're both in their 30s, and they choose not to buy a house. There's a lot of young people that do not care for homeowners. They make enough money to pay rent, and they're happy to have that lifestyle. So, that's just a changing lifestyle thing. It's not nothing to do with what we're doing at the county level.
I would also suggest, just my opinion, that cost, the cost to build, has really put pressure on the cost of single-family housing. Builders, developers are actually looking at what they can do that's more cost-effective. And building an apartment building, getting eight units in a building at a per-unit cost is much more achievable than building four, $500,000 housing. And I think that's part of the problem, is what's pushing it, especially the last year or two.
Mr. Hammond.
I could say from experience, a year ago, I was looking for an apartment, and most of them were six-month waiting lists. The only way I got into an apartment was that it was a new apartment under construction, and I just happened to get lucky and go there, because they were almost 90 percent filled, and they weren't even completing, completed the buildings yet. It's really rough out there to find rental property.
Mr. Hammond.
Yeah, I've traveled around the county, I see all the building of the apartments, and from what I can see, I don't see any low-income apartment dwellings. These are renting out for $8,000, $9,000, $1,200 a month, so that's certainly not low-income people.
One other thing, I understand from reading the background information on this that most of the cities in St. Charles County are already part of this program.
That's correct. City of Old Fallon has their own program, so they do not join the urban county. But Wentzville, St. Peters, and St. Charles, of the larger communities, are part of it, as well as most of the smaller communities.
So, this would just cover the unincorporated areas.
And those cities.
And the cities.
The cities that join, yeah.
Okay, all right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you very much. The next bill for introduction is bill number 5078.
Bill number 5078, requested by Steve Elman and John White, sponsored by John White. In ordinance authorizing St. Charles County matching funds as required by the state of Missouri to utilize funding from SCS, HCS, HB 3020, Section 20.881, the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery, Water Infrastructure Fund for assistance with drainage and erosion issues, and subsidance in the Heritage Subdivision in St. Charles County, and approving execution of any necessary agreements.
Any comments or questions?
I do.
Mr. White.
I just want to thank County Executive Elman and State Reverend Phil Chris Melly for bringing these funds to us, and I hope it does give some relief to the people in heritage, so, thank you very much.
Mr. Elman.
Chairman, inquire Mr. White.
I'm sorry.
I think you should thank the lawyers for finding a way.
The lawyers don't get a lot of things, so, yeah.
Finding a way to do this in that very thick set of guidance which we got a few months ago.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Cronin.
Yeah, the other thing, Madam Chairman, the other thing is, of course, this is conditioned on the governor signing the budget bill. Making the state funds available, but I don't, I don't anticipate a problem with that, but we'll let you know.
So, that's on his desk, I understand, right?
Pardon me?
Is that on his desk now, waiting for signature?
Yes, it has been for some time.
And he has until June 30.
It has until the end of the month, okay.
Yeah.
He's probably loosening up his signing hand to get ready. Mr. Cronin.
It's great that, you know, the representative and this county administration came up with federal and state funds to fix this. But regardless, this is a Band-Aid on a problem, okay? We have a hell of an unfunded liability in this county with all the drainage structures we have. That's why we bought the other truck to inspect them all. So, if we're going to look for a long-term solution, if someone else in the council wants to work on this with me, what we really need is a voter-approved drainage district that would cover the unincorporated areas of the county with drainage systems. Okay, so, when a new subdivision goes in in the county, like the two that are going in my district recently, okay, and their storm sewers are going in right now, once this county inspects them and signs off on them, we're responsible from that point forward for repairing them. And right now, we're taking money, the only choices are taking money out of general fund or the highways, okay? So, I think similar to other counties have any drainage district, and that's, this is used quite often in farmland, for farmland drainage, be something we might want to look at, just explore as an option for a long-term fix this problem.
Maybe we could contact our state legislators and give them something to work on for the next session.
I don't think you have to go that far, I think Mr. Elman's got a lot of experience with this type of stuff, prior to being executive, okay?
Mr. Cronin. I'm sorry, Mr. Brazel, excuse me.
You know, the fact is, is these people have suffered for a long time, their houses are falling in the ditch, and it should have, this should have been handled a long time ago. Because to me, infrastructure's government's primary responsibility. However, I don't agree with setting up a water district, and that's another taxation, because the county has plenty of money to pay for this through highways, and that's what they should be doing. But this is just an example of explosive growth. We, last week, meeting, we talked about $15 million buyout on floodplain houses. This is 10, $5 million in water drainage problems, and we're throwing these houses in at these small lots and having all this growth in concrete. And so, there are, there are consequences to explosive growth. So, everybody thinks, oh, let's be, let's grow, grow, progress, progress. It's not progress, it's a zero-sum game, so, that's all I'm going to say.
Any other comments on this?
Mr. Elman want to say something?
Yeah.
No, I was just going to point out that the reason we probably need to look at the drainage district is that all these cities already have a tax. So, you know, we need a tax for the unincorporated areas, and as far as I know, if we're going to do something, as far as I know, there's no way we can, any of the taxes we're authorized to do now, we can't just authorize them in the unincorporated areas, so.
And what I'm discussing is going to be voter-approved by the folks who actually benefit from these services. In response to Mr. Brazel, I don't think it's proper to take voter-approved road and bridge tax money, or voter-approved tax and transportation improvement district money, and use it to fix storm sewers. People voted for that for road and bridges, not for storm sewers. So, I think that, I think these type of districts work in a lot of places. I have farmland way up north, two counties north of here that are in those districts. It's something that's going to work, it'd have to be voter approval, and the voters are going to have to be educated on it. But to do nothing, okay, we risk the possibility of the next time a situation comes like, that comes up like in Heritage now, we don't have the funds. So, we've got to come up with something long-term.
The other, the other important point here is you mentioned, you called it a tax. Actually, with a drainage district, it's not a tax, it's a fee.
Fee.
Based upon.
Please be respectful, please be respectful of speaker.
It's a fee based upon your benefit. So, in other words, if you, if you live up on the hill and don't get any benefit, you don't pay anything. If you live at the bottom of the hill, and you get all the water coming down, you pay a little more. But it's based upon the benefit, a fee based upon the benefit rather than a flat tax for everybody.
Any other discussion on this bill? Okay. The last bill for introduction is bill number 5079. Do we have an amended bill on that? Read the title first. Okay, all right, read the title.
Bill number 5079, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by council as a whole, in ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement with the school districts of Francis Howell Orchard Farm, Fort Sumo at Washington, and Wentzville, to place school resource officers in the elementary schools located in the unincorporated area of St. Charles County during the 2022-2023 school year.
Is there a motion to amend?
Yes, I'd like to amend, basically, there's a typo in section four, item four, it should be changed from 60 to 6, 600, instead of 6000. So, it's just a typo.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? All in favor, say aye.